Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 13th day of June 2022. I'd like to open tonight's meeting with welcoming our guests and move right into tonight's agenda. First item on tonight's agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on May 23rd of 2022.
Move to approve and await the reading.
Okay, we have a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Counsel, are there any changes to the minutes as they were presented to you in your package? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment?
Nobody here for public comment.
Okay, now, as a part of our increase on water and sewer rates, this is a time for anybody present to speak publicly about the proposed increased water or sewer rates. It doesn't appear that we have anybody present to do so, unless you would like to, Ray? Nope, okay. All right, so no public comment. What I'd like to do is go right into the second reading and adoption of the proposed water rate ordinance increase. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, and now it's discussion. Counsel, I'd like to give you some little additional information. At the last meeting, it was requested of me to go back to the duty expert on the cash flow analysis, and I did so. As a matter of fact, I went back and got with Michael the day after our last council meeting on the 24th of May, and just to try to have another deep dive into where we're at, what he's proposing, and under any circumstances, would he change anything that he's proposed. So what I'd like to do is just give you a quick overview of that follow-up conversation that I had with Michael. First and foremost, when you look at the cash flow analysis on both the water and sewer, something that is grossly misleading are those percentages when it shows that going forward, the cash flow analysis is, the debt service coverage is 159% for the sewer and 179% for the water. If you take a deep dive into that paper, you'll see that that debt service coverage is A divided by B. What that doesn't include in that analysis that he's presented there is the required reserves that are listed here, your debt service reserve, the new by statute that we do not currently have and will going forward, Senate Bill 234 that requires us to establish a separate working capital account and allowance for both water and sewer. And this was the state legislature's move on certain size utilities to have to set aside separate funds that are working capital allowances because of all the issues with utilities and PSD statewide. So we are, we do fall in the criteria for that new working capital allowance, Senate Bill 234, so that is actually figured in these new rates. And then, of course, you've got the renewal and replacement reserve revenue, that's the two and a half percent that we're required to maintain as a part of our debt covenants with our bonds. And so if you look at this, if you look at this, these cash flow analysis forms, you'll see that all this debt service coverage factor represents is A divided by B. It doesn't take all these other allowances into consideration in that percentage. I will tell you, counsel, jumping real quick forward to the next meeting, in our next meeting, you will get, I was gonna try to have it for you this meeting, but I figured it would be very complicated to get through this and the budget approval for utilities for the '22, '23 fiscal year, but you will see that taking all things into consideration the best we can without the factor of inflation, which is not figured in any of this, our debt service coverage projections for next year's sewer is 139.2, and debt is, and water is 131 with a combined 135.1. And again, these are not final numbers. This is still in draft form. We're still working diligently to get this budget put together for your approval at the next meeting, but you can see it's far from these projections that are on these cash flow analyses that don't include the other debt service reserve requirements that we're required to have by statute and by compliance with our bonding. The other thing, just in addition to what that means, and it's spelled out on here on this form, that Senate Bill 234 makes us put in reserve $141,712 on water and sewer is $82,699. And we're currently working, and potentially at the next meeting, you'll be approving another account that we have to maintain because it's our understanding right now, we're trying to get clarification on the bill, we can't co-mingle those funds, so those funds actually have to go into a separate working capital account. We've got to show for our audit after next fiscal year that we did establish those accounts and set those aside and didn't co-mingle them with other funds. The other thing too, that I will tell you, is factored into this, and again, Michael used the going rate for this analysis because we didn't pay him to do a Rule 42, which is the comprehensive deep dive that you have to have if you're going after any additional bonding or funding, of which we weren't. So basically, what we got is the going rate cash analysis, which if you look at a lot of the numbers that he's even used in this computation, they're just carried forward from the last fiscal year on what our expenses were from the standpoint of the analysis that he's done. You know, again, you know, in talking about the analysis that he's done for both water and sewer, and then talking about where we're at currently, you know, I hate to say this, but today, before city council meeting, I went to the pump and filled up at $5 a gallon. $4.99.9 is what gas is right now, and that's the kind of fees that we're paying to run this city and operate this utility, along with all of the other increased cost of doing business, which materials, you know, I think it's real misleading when you look at the CPI or the inflation rate. I think it's all misleading to what the real rates are that we're paying when you talk about materials and stuff. I mean, it's not up 10 and 20% or 20 and 25% like we're doing the utilities. I mean, if you think about it, two years ago, we were paying $2.39 a gallon of gas, and now it's $4.99.9. Not only that, I quickly related to the materials that we're buying, pipe and stuff to operate the utilities, and it's outrageous. I mean, some of that stuff has taken 2 and 300% increases or more. So all of that's factored in, and you know, what I hope and pray is that, again, there's never a day that we ever want to take a rate increase, certainly as a rate increase as significant as these. I did go back and do some computation and looking at, you know, where we're at with our combined billing rate, and again, not that this makes it any better, I know all the outlying areas too are up for rate increases like we are, but even with this rate increase, we are still with the combined billing sewer and water, we're still competitive with them, and in most instances, better than their rates today. And of course, that's when you look at the ones that have both water and sewer, but even if you take it as a standalone utility, some of the things that I know that's happening in our, in our region, we're still gonna be super competitive with where we're at. Now, that doesn't make it any easier, you know, I'm real sensitive to especially those that are retired, and not only that, watching their retirement in this current time dwindle through things that are happening that are certainly out of our control, but you know, being super sensitive, we're not taking anything, and I even asked Michael, as was discussed last time, when he did an analysis last time and came back from it, I backed off of it knowing there were things that we could do internally to not have to take what his recommendation was. As him and I had a detailed conversation, he agreed with me that absolutely unequivocally he would not back off of these recommendations because of the factors that we're living in today that are not figured in these rate increases. So I will tell you this, you know, with, with the combination of all that play an important role in this, starting here at City Hall and down to the management of the lowest guy on the totem pole, we're all sensitive to what's happening with these rates, the impact that it has on our citizens, and we're gonna do everything we can do to manage, continually, to continue to manage prudently with all due diligence, I's dotted and T's crossed, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to preserve the fiscal integrity of the utilities, so therefore, we're not a couple years down the road looking at it as a rate increase. With that said, if anybody's got any questions before...
What was the amount of the reserve for the sewer and water?
So in the, in the capital account, this is new per Senate Bill 234, we have to put 100, this is annually, $141,712 in water and $82,699 in sewer. And that's in addition to the two and a half percent that we have in reserve, carry in reserve with, with the debt covenants Okay, so anybody have any other questions?
I have a couple.
One is, why did he use information that was almost a year old to do this? Don't you think with inflation and so forth during the past year, that some more current information should have been used to do the numbers? The other thing is, about what you spoke about with the reserves and so forth, why was that not explained to us when we got the analysis to start with?
Well, that's my fault, Jim.
It looks like maybe he would have provided some notes and went through that calculation or, I mean, here we are using, I mean, it seems like...
Well, so Jim, we could, we could postpone this and go back and have him use today's information, and the numbers are gonna be higher. I can promise you that, because the expenditures we've had, the...
I'm not arguing that.
No, I'm just saying, but the thing of it is, is so, when we started this process in motion, I went to Michael and, and asked him to do a cash flow analysis. Actually, I went to Cookie and had Cookie get ahold of Michael and ask him to do a cash flow analysis. This cash flow analysis is fiscal year June of 2021, so we've had it in our hands. I don't know what exact date Michael shipped this over to us. I could find that out, but it is working on the last fiscal year. You are correct, we could have went back to him and asked for him to use the first six months of this fiscal year, which I can assure you in doing so, if you look at the way our cash flow has went because of the expenses that we're incurring with, with the operations today, these numbers would be worse. The increase would probably tell us it would have to be a little bit higher, and I'm sorry, I just apologize. I should have, I should have given you a better explanation when I, when I gave you the, the, the cash flow analysis, and I will tell you this, anybody that we deal with as a city, the door's open for you all to make calls and have conversation with, and I would never keep you from that opportunity. So I take the hit for not breaking this down more and, and, and not giving you a better explanation. That's my fault.
But I think it's pretty much standard procedure to use the previous year's information because you don't have a year's information going forward.
I don't know, I don't know what date we went to him, but when we went to him, he used the last fiscal year's numbers, and, and I don't remember when we got this in, but I can tell you that when we went to him, we even got in line and waited for a while before he could even get to us to do the analysis. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what date this is. Yes, you are correct, Jim, that it is the fiscal year 2021, so it'd be 2021 fiscal year, not the current fiscal year we're in.
I think if we go back and have him do the first six months of this fiscal year, we may have a 35% rate increase instead of a 25%.
Well, maybe we should. I'm not arguing whether we should or not, I'm just saying, why did we not use more current information? I think Cookie told me that she had provided through December to him, and he chose not to use it. Financial information.
Well, I mean, again, I think that's just standard procedure to use the past fiscal year, because that's complete, you know, documented, filed information.
Now, what the...
Now, we can go back... I was, I was unaware, I mean, you know, I was unaware of that he didn't use through December. I was unaware of that. Again, I'm, I'm sorry.
Are they gonna, is the Public Service Commission is gonna hold us to A divided by B or whatever that calculation is correct? And he's saying if you factor in these other things, these reserve accounts and so forth, then that actually, on a practical level, it changes that, it lowers that number.
Well, so this is done, this pro forma is done per Public Service Regulation. So when they read this document, what I didn't explain to you, they know. And, and, and so, this is the standard cash flow analysis that he would do for any utility. This document's not different than what he would do for anybody else. So, so, so when the Public Service Commission gets his cash flow analysis, they can sort this inside and out.
I'm just saying, from us looking, you know, if you look at the last financial information that Cookie provided us through March 31, she had that calculation in there, you know, the debt service to cash flow calculation.
It's in there every, it's in every, every financial, yeah.
My question is, is that what the Public Service Commission holds us to, that calculation?
So what it really comes down to, Jim, is...
I mean, because that's kind of what we've talked about, you know, that our, you know, we're in violation of our debt covenants, right? We've talked about that at the meeting.
Okay, so that's not regulated by the Public Service Commission. That's where, you know, your, your compliance with your debt covenants is your bonding, is with your bond. That's not the Public Service Commission. Now, the Public Service Commission is not knocking at our door telling us to take a rate increase.
I understand.
What they're gonna do when we submit our package is they're gonna analyze the package thoroughly to make sure that what we're doing is compliant with all of the statute, regulation, the whole nine yards, and certainly, they wouldn't let us take more, you know, more, and then, and then obviously, if we, if we submitted a package, you know, that, that they didn't feel was, was gonna be enough, I'm sure that they would, you know, they would tell us, you know, after their analysis that, you know, hey, y'all might not be taking enough.
Yeah. Well, my question is, I mean, going forward, if Cookie provides that number, should we be concerned about that debt service coverage in it? You know, when she gives us financials every quarter and she does that calculation, should we be concerned about that ratio?
Yes, sir, always you should be concerned.
Okay, is that the, is that the number that the Public Service Commission says that we have to meet?
So what it comes down to, Jim, is in our annual report that we file annually, and these financials concur with our annual report, okay? When we file our annual report, okay, that's, you know, really what it comes down to, you're mixing things up because that, that debt covenants, that 115% or better that we need is to be in compliance with our bonds, okay? Now, if we were, I'll give you an example, back in 2007, when I became mayor, we had ongoing projects with Blade Creek, and the Public Service Commission told me they would not honor any more borrowed money from the city of Somersville until we got compliant with our debt covenants of the 115%.
That's Public Service Commission's...
Yes, because a lot of that, you know, you get a lot of money from Infrastructure Council and all that, and all of that goes through their approval, okay? Now, once the bonds are issued, you know, obviously, what could happen is if you don't meet, you know, if you can't pay your bonds, then it's, it's them knocking on your door saying, hey, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna call this bond, or you gotta get compliant. So, 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 you know, from a regulatory standpoint, I don't want to downplay the significance of the Public Service Commission in making sure that you have a financially sound utility because obviously, they're a watchdog, but, but the real, the real pressure on the 115% will come from them if you're trying to borrow money, because they're gonna deny you, because you don't usually just borrow straight out lending money, you put a lot of grant money with that through the Infrastructure Council. So, so they're gonna be the watchdog and say no, and they were back in '07 when we had those Blade Creek extension projects going, you know, I was told, you gotta get, you gotta get your debt covenants in, in, in place, or you're not gonna get any more, you're not gonna get any more money, okay? So, so it's a combination of both of those, so I don't want to downplay the significance, but it's not the Public Service Commission, obviously, in an audit, it's a hit if, if, if you don't make debt covenants, if you're not making your, your bond debt, and then, of course, the lower you go, the more concerned they get. And, and as I tell you now, that, that always, it's a number that I've watched from day one, is, you know, in, in anticipation going forward with these financials, working these numbers, the revenue these numbers are gonna generate, we're looking at 135.1 combined. Now, now, this isn't final, this is draft, this will be before your next, next meeting, this is next year's budget.
Yeah, I wish we would have had some notes or something to kind of better understand the lay of the land.
I apologize for that. That's, that's, that's 100% on me.
But the calculation still will be the same as far as what we need to look at every quarter in our financials, right?
Correct. It's, it's, it looks just like this here, and then it's right here, debt service coverage. It's gotta be better than 115.
So we're gonna use that now. That may pop up considerably here after the rate increase, correct?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're, right now, we're not compliant, it'll be compliant after, you know, of course, you know, you're gonna have to get, you know, you gotta, you gotta generate those revenues, so, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we do until, you know, when we get to the annual report, that's when rubber hits the rack. What is it then? You know, because a lot of this is done on projections on what we think is gonna be paid and generated by water sales and with that increase.
Well, I understand, this, this thing is, is a, is a judgment call. It's, nobody knows what the future holds, and certainly in light of what's happened in the last year too, with rates and cost and things, so it's a, the question is how much the rate is, has always been a question in my mind, you know, how much? And whenever he presented his analysis with, you know, with the, the numbers, the ratios as, as high as they are, you know, 160, 180, that was concerning in light of what we did last time, you know?
I agree.
But we're in a different day, and I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that necessarily, but it's concerning, looking at it, because it is a big increase. And, you know, several people reached out to me and said, you know, why, why are we doing so much, you know, that kind of thing, so. I guess if going forward, we'll just need to look at those numbers every quarter and see where we are, and how long this thing lasts is another issue. I mean, we may be able to go two or three years without any increase, or we may go five or six or eight, who knows? So it's, it's a, it's a judgment call, something we're dealing with unknown, we don't, we can't rationally compete, so I appreciate what he's done and his experience and everybody doing this, it's just I didn't understand.
That's my fault, Jim, I'm sorry, and again, I don't, I'm not gonna make any excuses. I should have, I should have given you all a deeper dive and, and, you know, it's just on me.
Mayor, one of my other questions, and I don't even know if this is feasible, but could you look at this on a year-to-year basis, or do you just have to basically set a rate increase and hope it lasts several years? Because just like you were saying, not, you know, having the unknown. I mean, what happens if we do a 25% increase and two years from now, inflation's back down, and it's not high, and fuel prices are back down and everything, I mean, do we keep the rate increase or do we go back? Or, I mean, is it easier to go year by year? For, for, just, my only thoughts are, let's say you could get by this year with a 10% increase, and next year, inflation didn't go up anymore, so you didn't need to raise it that year. Well, then you save, you know, folks 15% on that year. Now, if you've gotta take another increase, then they're gonna be paying it, but I mean, can you do it year by year like that, trying to save them what you can, instead of just saying...
So let me, let me, let me say a couple things to what you said, Brandon, because I want to be clear. You again said inflation. Inflation is not figured in these rates. Inflation plays no role in these rates, okay? You know, the, the, the inflation costs that we've seen, you know, it's not factored into this, okay? So, so, and, and I guess that you could look at, I mean, I mean, think about what we're, think about what you're dealing with now because we're taking a rate increase. I don't, I don't know, and, and again, you know, you know, I've been at this for quite a, quite a while and, and been well aware and in tune with even, even the surrounding area and what goes on with rate increases. I don't know of a model that says we're gonna rate increase you every year, we're gonna evaluate what it needs to be and do it year by year. I won't tell you that can't be done because I don't know that, but I don't know any model, I've never heard of a model that, that you, you... And then, the other thing I will tell you is, you get to see the fluff of what goes on to this. There is a whole lot of behind the scenes that's going on to redo the ordinances, to do the cash flow analysis, and to continually work all of this paperwork. I can tell you it's an exercise that I wouldn't want to do anyway. And then, you know, especially because it's like, it's like the Consumer Price Index and, and just inflation that we live today, it goes up every year, and, you know, we're in, we're in extraordinary odd times at the craziness of inflation, but even at that, we don't buy bread today what we bought bread 10 years ago for. We don't, you know what I'm saying? So, so when they, when they do these cash flow analyses, they're taking into consideration that they're gonna carry you for a little while. So initially, even if you would go back and analyze the last rate increase that we took, no, we didn't take everything that he recommended, and, and, and I might even have pulled back a little bit this year if it weren't for what I know, real life, we're dealing with on the inflation side right now, I might have even pulled back some this year. And I had that talk with Mike, when he said, Mayor, you know, it's your all's call, but I'm telling you right now, my numbers don't take into consideration the money you're spending right now as a result of inflation. So if you pull back, then you're probably gonna be right around the corner of another rate increase. And, and so, when they do these, they figure, like I say, even when you take the numbers that we're using, using the cash flow that this is gonna generate, we're projecting that it's gonna put us in the 130 percentile range. That may not be the case if things keep going crazy like they are, I mean, so...
Yeah, and I, and I know it's all, I mean, I know that every bit of this is unknown. We don't know what's gonna happen. I just, I do think about that four years ago, when we did an increase, and we did bump it back some, and that got us through, I guess, three years of being compliant, and now we've gotta take another one. But that was my only thing I thought of, is, you know, the little bit we did bump it back on that last one, I mean, for three years, it, it was a lower rate to what it would have been, and we were still in compliance, but I know it's hard to do all that based on the unknown, you don't know what's coming down the road.
And the other thing I'll say too is, I think there's, there's some legitimacy to this process, this, this cash flow analysis. I mean, this isn't, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be misleading like it's an unknown and we're throwing darts in the dark. There's some legitimacy to, to this cash flow analysis, and, and certainly... There's some legitimacy to, to this cash flow analysis, and, and, and certainly, um, you know, this is the same that every utility, um, undertakes before an increase, and, and certainly, again, um, you know, you, you call down to the Public Service Commission and you ask them about Michael's credentials, and they're gonna tell you he's at the top. And so, you know, we've got one of the best of the best working with the city from a standpoint of, of, you know, working our numbers. And, and again, my apologies for not taking a deeper dive with you all from the inception, and, and, and I just, you know, I, I'll, I'll do better. Any, any other questions? Okay, so, um, we've got a first and a second on the water rate. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Um, second and final reading and adoption of proposed sewer rate ordinance. By the way, I do want for clarity purposes to say the water rate was a 25% increase. Um, the sewer rate is a 20% increase, so I'll entertain a motion.
So.
We have a first?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions on the sewer? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Council, the next item on the agenda is presentation of draft City of Somersville 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And for that presentation, I'll turn the floor over to the city recorder, Gary Whitaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think everybody has right in front of them the Comprehensive Plan 2030 for the City of Somersville. I'm gonna start, just, just start a little presentation here with, uh, I mean, this thing took months and months and months, as I know, I have a couple of folks on my planning zone here on the commission and, and Jenna Brandon, and it's, uh, took a long time to, to do this, so for me to do a presentation in just a couple of minutes might be difficult, but I'm gonna, uh, begin, if you'll, please turn over to page 11, I think it's very important. I know this, this is somewhat minor, but it is also very, very important. When you look at this Comprehensive Plan, uh, it is the planning process. Uh, I'm only gonna read the first paragraph. "In 2004, the West Virginia Legislature rewrote the state laws governing land use, planning, and regulation. Those provisions are found in Chapter 8A of the West Virginia Code, which covers comprehensive plans, subdivision, and land development ordinances, improvement location permits, and more. All cities with ordinances that regulate land development were required to create and adopt a Comprehensive Plan by June 11, 2014. Each Comprehensive Plan remains in effect for 10 years and must be updated by the Planning Commission every 10 years at minimum. Local governments that do not comply with these requirements are not allowed to enforce zoning ordinance, subdivision, and land development ordinance, improvement location permit requirements, or almost any other land use regulation." So, this is why we go through this process every 10 years. Um, when it was first brought to me, um, it was, it was relatively new to me, and, um, I had a lot of help on it, and, and I'm gonna point that out right now, there was a tremendous amount of help. Uh, I wanna first thank the mayor, he, he continued to challenge us, uh, he challenged me, I know, on a daily basis. We probably didn't get moving along just as quickly as some would like to see it done, but I'll tell you, it was, it was a challenge, we wanted to do a good job. Part of that original challenge was Gary, we don't want just a, a document or a plan that sits on a shelf. And so, we took this a step further, and I think we went further than, than, uh, folks before us in making sure we had a good one. There was a lot of people to, to thank, my commission, I spent countless hours, I think it's important to point out that these are folks that donate their time, they're not on a salary, they're not being paid, and I really challenged them and they stepped up. I mean, they were coming in every couple of weeks and working on things, uh, so I appreciate that. The WVU extension played a big role in this, uh, with Lauren Weatherford and Amy Cook, uh, they, they certainly helped us every step of the way, and without them, it wouldn't have been possible. WVU, I gotta, gotta give Dr. Margaret Stout and her students a lot of, a lot of kudos. This was, uh, done during a difficult time, and typically you would have a lot of input from the, uh, community. Um, we opened this up right in, right in the middle of COVID, as everybody remembers, and, uh, pulling the community together was, was a difficult task, but we had a lot of folks, uh, from the community come in, so for that, I wanna thank them also. Uh, council members, this council, uh, played a big part of this. Uh, I had several of these council members, uh, talking to me about this, um, and telling me what their, what their constituents were saying and, and the community was saying, so that, I appreciate all that help. Uh, Amy, uh, can't, can't thank her enough, she was right there behind me, Jason Eads, who came in, did those Zoom meetings, and Julie back there, she was, she was coming in, so I appreciate that. Shay Straight, uh, came in on the end and helped me finish this thing up and help us all just get it together and finalize it. Uh, so, I appreciate him. Marianne Taylor, there were so many, but Marianne Taylor and her staff, we were having meetings at the R-Rays, so she was, so she was very helpful too. So, it was, it's, it's, it's an amazing document, there's a lot of pages, and like I said, I could sit here and really go through it, uh, page by page, and I would have fun doing it. I, I've really enjoyed doing this, and it's, it's been a great learning experience. Um, but if you'll flip back to the table of contents, I think it's important, I won't, I'm almost, I'm not gonna spend 30 minutes on this, but I think it's important that we all look at the table of contents, and since it's on the, uh, social media, it'll be in a newspaper, I think it's important that people know exactly what we were dealing with. Um, but there is a tremendous community profile section in here that spent, the, the students of WVU spent hours and hours on and just gathering information. So, you have history, you have current context, you have competitive advantages in the area, uh, and then it goes into the planning process. Uh, there's natural resources, part of that, cultural and historic resources, land use and design, uh, it goes right on down through there, it's conservation, agriculture, open space, uh, institutional, residential, residential densities, commercial, commercial intensities, employment, mixed use, growth management, you know, I, I was, I really learned a lot there, you really need to look at that 1% growth every year, and where are you gonna stand, and how are you gonna support that? Uh, future land use maps and proposed zoning districts, those were huge, and they're in this book, the maps are pretty nice, if you need larger maps, we can support you with that, anytime you need larger maps, uh, we can, we'll have to print those off for you. Um, so, as you can see, transportation and circulation, one of my favorites, not my personal top favorite, but right there next to it, probably number two, it's certainly one of my favorites. Uh, I've always believed in connecting neighborhoods together, and, and not only that, but different zones, different, uh, you know, land uses, you know, getting people from homes into the business districts and so on and so forth, those, those are near and dear to my heart, and I think we're working toward that. Public service utilities, civic facilities, parks and recreation, which will be right up there on the top for me, uh, it's another one of my favorite. I think, you know, one of the most important things there is, you know, you think of parks and recreation, you think of just maybe one particular group, uh, of folks in your area, but really, it's, it's to take care of everybody in our community, it's not just for one group, it's, it's for many. Um, so, we're certainly working in that direction. Uh, housing, super important, you're seeing that now, uh, please, council, stay with me on, with the planning and zoning. We are right now, right in the middle, and I'm glad we had this, this, uh, Comprehensive Plan to work through, because now as we sit and deal with the ordinances, we have a good plan that we're working toward. Right now, we're right in the middle of Airbnbs, tiny houses, um, I bet you I spent 14 hours last week alone, uh, working with a couple of individuals wanting, uh, tiny houses. Okay, so, you know, this, this complete Comprehensive Plan was huge for me, huge for our, uh, commission moving forward, so it'll help us as we sit down to write these ordinances, um, and, and we'll talk more about tiny houses and Airbnbs in just a few minutes. Um, so, right on down from that is economic development, plan implement, implementation, it's all in here, and I challenge everybody to please take a look at it, it's a great process, it's a great, it's a great read, it's, I know Mr. Underwood likes to ask that question, is this a good read? This is a great read. Stick this somewhere in your room, in your house where you can pick this up and read it. Uh, it is amazing what all is in here, and, and Mayor, I'm happy to say, uh, really, with a lot of help from a lot of folks, it's not just something that's gonna sit on a shelf, it's something we're gonna work with. This is also something that, you know, you're recommended to pick this thing back up in about five years, I mean, you're always, always working into this Comprehensive Plan, but in five years, you really should pick this up, and, and, uh, if I'm still here in five years, I'll challenge the planning and zoning to pick it up in five years, let's see where we are, let's see if we're tracking well, and see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. So, again, if anybody has any questions on this, please, you know, do not hesitate to come out and give me a call, or call Brandon and Jim, I'm sure they'd be glad to help you.
Call Gary.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Mayor, that's, that's basically all I have right now.
Great, great overview. You guys wanna add anything? Jim?
No, I don't, I don't think so, it was quite a process, and I probably wasn't prepared for the length of it. It's quite a deal forever.
It did.
And it's pretty involved, and, uh, seems to be somewhat of a consultant's and academic kinda dream of some sort, that project, you know, so, uh, but going forward, it can provide some help and guidance to us in making decisions going forward in, in the community, so, you know, I can appreciate it and pay it for what it is. It is just a guideline, though, it's required by law, the document is, but as far as I know, there's no requirement that we stick hard and fast everything in it.
Absolutely.
So, there's some things in it that are, uh, seem like maybe some overkill, there's some things that how in the world would we ever accomplish, but that's kind of the nature of it, so.
There's some stuff in there that we're getting ready to do too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, there is.
Pretty good process.
I mean, there's some things that we're doing today, and that we're talking about doing today, that, um, back in 1960, we would never dream we'd be doing. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something that could have never...
Okay. Thank you, um, Gary, this is a great final product. Um, again, hats off to you and all and everybody, um, the many different folks and businesses and individuals that came together. Um, it is a good read, um, I think there's something to be learned by everybody. Um, interesting enough, um, uh, the, the details on the breakdown of the city that were the 36th largest city in West Virginia. Um, our population is comprised of 45% male and 55% female. Uh, I found this a bit interesting, that the average age of the Somersville resident is 52 years old, and that's approximately two years older than the average age of other Nicholas Canyons, and 10 years older than the median age of all West Virginians.
Really?
So, um, I find that real interesting.
Wow.
I mean, you know, um, so, um, anyway, a lot, a lot of good information in here, and, and, and I, I think it appropriately spells out, um, where we need to focus, and, you know, uh, one of the things that I hone in on is housing. Um, so, um, anyway, um, job well done. Did you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, um, uh, it's my understanding that the next meeting, we have a public hearing, um, so, um, I guess what I'll ask, have we posted this on the web, the website? Can we post it on the website?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's on there already?
I don't know if it's on there or not.
It used to be.
Okay.
Okay, the updated, this updated version?
Update is not on there yet, is it? Is the update on there yet?
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Anyway, we need to get this out there, put it on the webpage, and then also make sure that everybody knows that this would be available here at City Hall. Um, we can also send it to you in a PDF form, um, if you're interested in it, but we will have a public hearing at the next regular scheduled, um, City Council Business Meeting, which would be, um, June 27th. Um, so, um, we have a public hearing, and then it would be the, uh, um, first, uh, is that right, first? First, uh, first, or first, um, first reading. Um, is there, is a public hearing on the, before the first one or the second?
It's right, it's the next.
Okay, the next one, okay, good deal. Okay, council, the next thing I'd like to do is review with you the home rule schedule. Um, we've talked about, um, home rule, um, we've talked about moving forward with home rule, I can tell you there's been a lot of behind the scenes, uh, on this process as well. So, tonight I'd like to bring you up to speed and kind of run you down, um, the home rule schedule for the City of Somersville. Um, you can see that, um, review other municipality home rule applications, um, uh, we began that process, um, some time ago, um, I actually even have, uh, visited several cities, um, near and far, um, to talk to them about their process, um, on the home rule, uh, on the home rule application. Um, you can see that, um, establish contact with the West Virginia Tax Department and begin developing a municipal boundary file, um, that was done on May 2nd. Um, I can tell you that, um, uh, wanna give a big shout out to Cookie, there was a lot that went into that process to identify our tax boundary. Um, it is complete, and it is now in the hands of the West Virginia Tax Department, and we're waiting back from them, um, after they have received the boundary file. Um, you can see the request a, uh, certificate of good standing from the West Virginia State Tax Department, that was accomplished on June 15th, and deliver a draft sales tax ordinance to the West Virginia Tax Legal, uh, Department for review, um, uh, actually, we have a, we've got a good standing, so we've already requested it and got it, and then you can see that we'll deliver a draft sales tax ordinance to the West Virginia Tax, uh, Legal Department for review on June 15th as well. Um, then a, uh, we'll send notice to the West Virginia Cabinet Secretaries, all Cabinet Secretaries have to get a notice, a letter from me, that'll be shipped out on Thursday, June 23rd. Uh, the first publication of notice of public hearing will also be on Thursday, June 23rd. The written plan available for public review, which is 30 days prior to a public hearing, uh, our actual plan will be available for review, the application on Friday, June 24th. The second publication and notice of public hearing will go out on Thursday, June 30th, and the first reading of the ordinance will take place on Monday, July 11th. The public hearing will take place on Monday, July 25th, and the second reading and adoption will take place on Monday, July 25th. Assemble all exhibits and attorney opinion and affidavits, uh, that'll all be done, um, July 26th through July 30th, and then, of course, deliver to the Home Rule Board, completed application no later than 30 days before the meeting, and right now that would be September 9th, 2022 or earlier. And then you can see the home rule meeting where I actually have to present the application to the full Home Rule Board is on Wednesday, October 12th, and we are slated, um, for me to do so on Wednesday, October 12th, they've been notified. So, what I'd like to do is go next to the narrative, there's a whole bunch of other information that we've compiled that goes apart of this application, but I wanna just hit the narratives. Um, issue one is municipal sales and use tax, category tax, specific barriers, um, specific, uh, problems created by law, you can read down there, um, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, all of this will be available, but obviously it permits a municipality to charge a 1% sales tax, um, uh, the City of Somersville having, you know, plans to do so, um, that whole thing, proposed solutions, um, you can read the narrative on the next, it says, along with maintaining our current portfolio, um, the City of Somersville has a current slate of projects that will be proposed, or will be supported by the proposed 1% additional tax, which, uh, in, in all, and if you read on back through here, I've also included, uh, the fiscal impact worksheet analysis, um, and again, we're still waiting on information back from the State Tax Department, so all of this right now is pretty much a guess, um, but we're looking at generating, um, an additional tax of $1.2 million, um, and of course, those tax dollars will be used to build out the 125.5 acre recreational facility, hopefully a visitor's center, sidewalk gateways connecting our community, and then, of course, increased funding for emergency services. The City of Somersville, history of excellent fiscal management, will utilize additional revenue to responsibly grow and maintain and sustain our infrastructural and economic future. The second issue, we're gonna go for two initially, all issues, once you get into home rule, all things that you're allowed to do with the home rule, um, you have to apply through the board, we're going for two initially. The second issue that we're going for on the front side- The second issue that we're going for on the front side is on the spot citation. And basically what this does is give our code official and law enforcement on the spot authority to issue citations for building maintenance and, or property maintenance. And you can read down through here, all of the specific, the legal barriers, the specifics to the problem caused by law, proposed solutions, it's all in there. And of course, all of this at said time will be available for review for 30 days for the public. Then the next page you can see, Council, is right now our fiscal impact worksheet for Home Rule proposal. You can see this is a draft, I want to be clear, this is a draft. We're still waiting for additional information back from the State Tax Department that will allow us to hone in a little bit better. In asking for this tax, you have to be able to relieve some tax, and we plan on doing so. We're going to relieve our retailer tax, we're going to cut it in half, and that will be a savings of $446,940 estimated being no tax to our city's retailers. And you can see that worksheet there. I invite any of you that want to dive into this process to come to me at any time, questions, concerns, comments. You know, this is, this has been a, I just won't parse words, it's been a major undertaking. The application is pretty detailed. I hope to have the application, not hope to, I hope to have it, I mean, it's got to be ready before the 24th, before we go out to the public. But certainly, you know, you'll have it before it's released on the 24th for the 30 days prior to the public hearing. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting, another meeting with the attorney Thursday, and we've got the rough draft of the entire application put together, we've just got a lot of tweaking we've got to do. I can tell you that the letters and all of the notifications and all of the other legal things, requirements that are a part of this are all pretty much ready to go. Certainly, I can tell you that I have rewritten this narrative in Section 1. I did not get a time, I kicked this narrative out to the attorney, he kicked it back to me. There will be some changes in this that I'm going to make, but I just didn't have time to get them ready tonight. So this is just a rough, rough to give you all some insight of what's coming with the Home Rule. Anybody have any questions? I know once you dive into this, you might, I invite you to give me a call.
Mayor, you may or may not know this, and maybe it's been on top of your plate, I don't know, but are you aware of the fact this might have on our current conversation about Airbnbs and rentals? I'm, I'm K in the, in the Home Rule bill.
Yes.
Deals with rentals.
Yes. I am aware of that, yes.
I mean, is that going to affect our ordinance going forward?
Um, no. You know, basically, the way it could affect it is if we're a Home Rule before you get the ordinance finished, which we're not going to be a Home Rule till next year. Okay, because this doesn't take effect, the tax doesn't take effect until July 1 of 2023. Okay? The Home Rule, if we get accepted in October, then it takes effect January 1 of 2023. So by adoption, anything that's on our book ordinance wise stands under the Home Rule unless we change it under the Home Rule. Okay, so it doesn't make, all of our other ordinances are still all valid?
Good.
Per our book? Okay, it's, it's, the Home Rule would then, you know, by adoption, I mean, then we could go through, if we want to change it per the allowance through Home Rule, then, you know, obviously you got a lot more freedom with Home Rule than what we do statutorily through our regular ordinance procedure. But yeah, if they're, you know, so, so, you know, my guess is that you're going to have that ordinance on the books already.
Should.
I hope so.
Yeah. Who better?
How many cities has it, oh man?
You know what? I actually wanted to bring that number, and I've got it in my office. It's over 50% of the cities in West Virginia are Home Rule. I could give you that exact number, and I really meant to have it. As a matter of fact, I was sitting here tonight before the meeting trying to get it up on my phone, and I couldn't get it on my phone. But it's over, over 50% of the cities. I can tell you from Morgantown to Princeton, even skipping out to Ansted. Fayetteville was one of the last cities to get in, I mean, just pretty.
Right now, it's been one, isn't it?
What's that?
Right now.
Yeah.
Fayetteville's in, Princeton's in, Fayetteville's in.
Yeah, I know.
So it's over 50%. That's the best I can give you right now. I actually have a list of every city that's already in.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, yeah. It's over 50%, I can't give you the exact number. Okay, again, Council, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to reappoint Tim LaRose to the Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2025. They have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is reappoint Jimmy Wedge to the Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2025. We got a first and a second. Are there any questions or discussions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. To reappoint Kenny Baker to the Somersville Forestry Council for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2025. First? And a second? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. The last reappointment is Beverly Riley to the Somersville Board of Zoning and Appeals for a three-year term expiring June 30 of 2025. They have a first? And a second? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. I want to give a shout out to Amy. Amy keeps me on my toes with all these. We've got some more next meeting. Amy, I do appreciate you keeping up with all these. Thank you so much. Okay, Recorder's Report.
Real short report, Mayor, just a little update. We are currently, Planning and Zoning is currently working on the Airbnb ordinance right now, trying to look at all angles of that. We did have tiny homes on that same agenda, and we have backed off of tiny homes for a moment to try to achieve the Airbnb. So that's sort of where we are. I know Stevie and some others have joined in. Please, we're going to continue the Zoom link on those so everybody can join in. And the next scheduled meeting is next Wednesday at?
Six o'clock.
Wednesday at six o'clock. I think the Zoom link may be already out there. Is it? Yeah, Zoom link is already out there. If you need that link, please don't hesitate, give Amy a shout, and she can fire it over to you by email.
It's a working session, right?
Yes, and Wednesday is a working session, just slightly different than the normal.
Have you reached out yet, or is it feasible to reach out to the Fire Marshal of West Virginia on what the rules are for occupancy for rent by square footage?
Haven't reached out to Fire Marshal per se, but Joey has all of that information, and that's something that he works off of on a daily basis, so he has that. It's certainly something that is top awareness to our group. I know that was mentioned very, very heavily in a couple of the last meetings. They want to make sure that we're, you know, following all those rules and regs. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Okay, Council, I got a whole litany of stuff here that I want to catch you up to speed on. First of all, in a very excited way, I've provided you all with a copy of a letter dated June 7 of 2022 that went out to the Honorable Michael Connor, Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works. This letter was actually delivered in hard copy, in multiple copies of it that will be distributed by Nick Rayhall to Senator Manchin's office, Senator Capito's office, and Congresswoman Carol Miller's office. They all, Nick Rayhall had laid the groundwork where they all now are going to do letters to endorse this letter, and then he's actually going to hand carry it to the Army Corps of Engineers. You know, we've gained a lot of ground, I got to tell you, in the little delay in getting this out, we're still bringing members on board, as you can see. You know, the letter starts by saying, you know, I, Robert Schaefer, Mayor of the city of Somersville, West Virginia, write this letter on behalf of our citizens with the support of my governing body, the West Virginia Legislature. As you remember, we got a resolution by both the House and the Senate, our partners adventure on the gorge, Ace Adventure. I will tell you that in a great way, brought on the new Director Brett McMillian with the West Virginia DNR, Chelsea Ruby with the West Virginia Department of Tourism, and many other partners. And so we've got a whole bunch of people standing with us in the effort to hopefully bring to true form a survey slash study that will enhance what we're doing with Somersville Lake and our hydro plant. So anyway, that's all underway, it's in the hands of Nick Rayhall, who we hired in collaboration with some of these partners to hand walk this thing through DC, and that is being done as we speak. The other thing I want to get you up to date on, Council, is there are ongoing talks and negotiations with Canal Falls PSD, Golly River PSD, and the city of Somersville. We actually have another scheduled meeting in the near future. Myself, the city attorney, and our superintendent James Corbett attended another status conference hearing before the Public Service Commission, and it was at that hearing that we were strongly encouraged to work on some kind of an outcome by Chairwoman Charlotte Lane, who is the Chairwoman of the West Virginia Public Service Commission. And so I can tell you that there are all kinds of sideline talks going on with another, hopefully, actually, this meeting is going to be at Canal Falls, we're all going to come together. I'm still of the frame of mind that we're going to be able to work something out. Obviously, if we don't, they've set another status conference hearing, I believe, in August, and if we haven't worked something out by then, the Public Service Commission's going to work something out. So I can just tell you that in a positive way, we continue to have ongoing negotiations to see what we can do to work it out amongst ourselves, find a solution. And again, our interest, and our interest will always be that we maintain unequivocally without any, I mean, nothing less than the water cells that we currently have and that we anticipate to pick up with the project that's being done so that we can supply wilderness with more water that eventually ends up at the Unlife Camp. Also, Council, I want to give you an update, you might be wondering, you haven't heard much, we got in line for an appraisal. The deed is ready to switch the Jones Hole from the city of Somersville to our Building Commission. I had a conversation with Todd Goldman today, he's finishing the appraisal. Once the appraisal is completed, we did the, we had the appraisal done on behalf of the city, just so that we could do the administrative, administrative work of that, I guess you could say, so I could do the administrative work of that. The appraisal is in the completed phases. As soon as he hands me the appraisal that same day, our city attorney will file the deed, giving the property over to the Building Commission, so they can sell the property. Also want to let you know that it is my hope that in the month of January, with no, I truly hope in the month of January, I know a lot of people are asking, you know, what's happened with the movement of the park? You know, we've had a couple of, the landowners had a couple of things that they needed to get worked out from an administrative standpoint, from their standpoint. So we believe we've got those things worked out. And so we hope to take that project to closing, at least on the land for the 125.5 acre recreational area. We hope to get that well underway in the month of July. And so, and again, I think even, I want to be clear, a lot of their delay has been administrative appraisals and so on and so forth, so a lot of it's indicative, just like us waiting on this Goldman appraisal. You know, we got in line some time ago, and he just called me today, we finally are getting it done. So just a lot of moving pieces out there with our economy and the economics of today that's delaying everything. So again, I feel that we're in good shape, that we will be going to closing on that property in the month of July. The other thing I want to do, Councils, I want to let you know that by Circuit Judge Steve Callahan, you all have been invited to join a joint graduation celebration of the Nicholas County family and adult drug treatment. This is going to take place here at the City Pavilion on June 22 at 11 a.m. And of course, these are, you know, people graduating from, which I think is an excellent program under the leadership of our Circuit Judge Steve Callahan. You know, these drug court programs that he's running, I think, are doing great things for our community. So if you can, please find time to attend that ceremony here at the Pavilion, June 22 at 11 a.m. Council, you all should have, if you haven't received an email from Mary Ann inviting you, because you have been invited by them. We're happy to have back in town this week the West Virginia State Quilt Festival. You all are invited to their picnic on Wednesday, June 15 at 6 p.m. I do want to make a comment here, this is, this is not open to the public, it's open to them, their members, and all of you. So that picnic is at the Arena and Conference Center at 6 p.m. And it would sure like to see some of you there if you can make it. In an excited way, they're celebrating their 10-year anniversary with us. Of course, you know, we had a couple years with the pandemic, or a year with the pandemic that we didn't have, but this is year number 10. So if you can make it to that celebration.
What's that date, did you hear it again?
Mike, it's June 15, it's this Wednesday. At 6 p.m. The last thing, Council, I want to, want to say is, at the last minute, today, the Governor did a proclamation declaring Friday a state holiday, that's going to be the official state holiday of Juneteenth. So, and he's backed it up to Friday, making it a public employee holiday, because of course, Monday, when the nation celebrates Juneteenth, because Juneteenth falls on Sunday, the nation's celebrating it on Monday, the 20th. Monday, the 20th is already a state holiday, that's West Virginia Day. So the Governor backed it up, and now is calling Friday a state holiday, that's when Juneteenth will be celebrated. So notification to the citizens that City Hall will be closed this week, Friday, and next week, Monday. Monday is West Virginia Day, Friday is recognized Juneteenth Day. So I just want to put that out there. And again, just got notification of it today, it was not put on the state official calendar. So anyway, that's an official state holiday. Or I mean, that's when the state of West Virginia will celebrate the national holiday of Juneteenth. That concludes the Mayor's report. Any Council reports? Okay. Hearing none? All those in, or I guess I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion, do adjourn, sorry about that. We got a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, Council, have a good evening.